So hey, I'll, I'll, I'll step back into chair duties. Thank you very much, Tim. I'll call the September 4th Planning Board meeting of the town of West Newbury to order and first order of businesses to recognize and thank Tim and Deb and all you guys for carrying on without me. I appreciate that very much.
Thanks, Ray. Yeah, and Jen, Jen was really awesome too. I think she logged off, but she was great. She had great help. But I'm glad you're feeling better, though.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's good to have you back.
The first, the first thing on the agenda is a discussion with Sam here about the Battery Energy Storage Systems Bylaw. I did look it over. I do have some comments.
Great.
Why don't we start out with, with you, Sam? What would you like to tell us?
Um, just, we spent a lot of time on the bylaw. It was developed using a Massachusetts state model with our power company in Groveland, because they are interested in putting one in and have some knowledge of these types of things doing what they do, plus a battery installer, plus our deputy chief in West Newbury is also a fire engineer and on the NFPA board for NFPA 855, which is the section that regulates large-scale batteries.
I'm sorry, who did you say that was? Who from town?
Kurt Richala.
And, and he's on the fire department?
Yep.
Thank you.
And, uh, you know, so we had a, a, a pretty good team, uh, and that, and a planner and myself, I'll, I'll include us. Um, so we did go through it. We tried to make it as comprehensive as possible in a way that we could allow them as we have to, but also have say in everything from, uh, you know, the aesthetics to the plantings around it, neighborhood impacts, firefighter training, firefighter, uh, implements for putting out battery storage fires. Uh, pretty much everything, you know, we threw the kitchen set together, uh, so that at least we have a say and can weigh in on these things.
Well, I, I appreciate that very much. Uh, and this is a topic that's kind of near and dear to my heart. And I expect that you guys know a lot more than I do. But maybe, uh, maybe my comments and comments from the other planning board members can, can help by just offering sort of this different perspective, the uninformed, maybe less informed perspective on things. I did, I did look at some other, uh, bylaws out there, other model laws, both within Massachusetts and in other towns as well. And, um, I guess the, the first big situ- big, uh, situation I come up with is under applicability. Can you guys see this? Is this?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So, uh, this strikes me, and again, I, I fully respect you to, Sam, put me in my place here. But, uh, I, I think this is overly complicated.
Okay.
I, I would say we just, we should just call out a limit. Um, where if, if you're less than, say, a hundred kilowatt hours, you're good to go and not worry about the different technologies.
The, I guess the only reason that was put in there is that was out of the codes themselves.
Yeah, and, 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 you know, we can, we can apply the Brian Murphy principle here and in that if it's already established in other codes that these limits are healthy, then we don't have to create, break new ground. But from, from my point of view, um, it, we, we just call it a hundred kilowatt hours. Something that comes up interesting here is that, uh, car batteries, uh, and truck batteries can be used for, uh, battery storage. Uh, and they might inadvertently fall into this under the bylaw. And if you've got a, a Ford Lightning with a hundred and fifty kilowatt hour battery in it, um, that would suddenly, uh, trigger, it, it wouldn't be allowed by this bylaw because that would be a lithium ion capacity greater than thirty kilowatt hours.
So, do they have, do they have that kind of rating, Ray?
Yeah, they do.
Got it.
And, and, uh, it's, it's, uh, as time goes on, like, my electric car can't do this. But, uh, the Lightning can and other vehicles, they, as time goes on, more and more vehicles can be used. And this is great for the grid because the grid can react very quickly to changes in demand. Uh, so this is being sold as a feature.
So just on a comment on the vehicles, they are classified, they are, aren't classified as energy storage systems. Uh, they are electric vehicles, which I know could cause some confusion, but under the, um, NFPA and seven eighty CMR, it, it is a, it, it's a different entity. Again, if, if you think correcting it with a higher threshold is fine, um, I'm not opposed to that. I just don't, I don't know if that would throw anything out of whack with the parameters they set. Uh, they being NFPA eight fifty-five, because I would think there was a reason for it, but I, I honestly, most of the other batteries, other than lead a, lead acid and your lithium ion, aren't your typical uh, batteries used anymore. And really, the lead acid are, are outdated. There's still some solar out there.
Right.
And, you know, using that, but almost everything at this point is the lithium ion.
Right.
So, yeah.
I'm just saying, I'm just saying that, uh, I think when in the, this, this is all early days and everything's being shaken up. And I, I don't feel so strongly about this that I'm going to make a stink about it. I'm just, I'm just making comments here. And cars can be used to store our energy and have it reverse go out to the grid. Um, and, and so if offhand, just looking at it from the outside and not having the meetings and time that you've spent, this strikes me as more complicated than it needs to be.
And it could be, I think it's definitely a question of bring back to, um, Kurt Richala, the, uh, the fire engineer that was on the NFPA board, because he'd have some insight as to is there a reason for it or are those just standard numbers for those types of systems with it?
And I, I'm sure you fight these different technologies. There's different firefighting techniques and, you know, the, the, the chance for runaway potential is different depending on the battery technology, et cetera. So again, I, I defer to your expertise. I'm just pointing these things out. Before I think on this, is anybody else on the planning board have anything to say about this?
I had the same, oh, go ahead, you go.
Well, um, All Saints Episcopal Church was approached two years ago by the Solvay Battery Company and would like to install a fairly jyungus, um, battery storage system at the back of our paved parking lot. I realize there are many, many hoops that need to be jumped through. The first one was finding out from National Grid whether this was a site that would work, uh, to, to even consider this. Apparently, Solvay has been uh, negotiating with a number of Episcopal parishes across the state. And, um, this is a system that has the capacity to power twelve hundred homes. So this is not just an individual storage thing. This would be, you know, this is, this is huge. Is that covered by this?
Yeah, that's, that's, that's the reason to have a bylaw like this. Uh, that's exactly what this bylaw is focused on, don't you think, Sam?
Yeah, and that, that's exactly what it is, is we're not concerned, I don't want to say we're not concerned, but this isn't to look at your in-home systems. These are systems that will be backup power sources for the town, sections of town for National Grid during peak hours. These aren't your, you know, it's, we got a power line down and, uh, I gotta run my refrigerator and my heater, so.
And by the way, the, uh, the, you know, the one that comes to a lot of people's minds is the Tesla Power Wall. And, uh, if, if you have just two of those, then you're okay with these limits as they show up here. But if you were to string together more and some of the modern, uh, home battery storage devices, you, you'd trigger this limit. So that's another reason, Sam, why it comes to mind. Uh, is, is something to be considered. I mean, right now, battery storage at home is ridiculously overpriced. Uh, but that, all that's going to change. Tim, you were about to say something?
Yeah, no, you bring up a lot of good points, Ray. Um, but, um, I, you know, I'm really, I'm kind of concerned about the safety aspect of this too. So, you know, I don't want to, I'm a little concerned about just taking a, a number, you know, with the different technologies that are here. I'd rather just kind of refer to whatever the NFPA requirements, you know, are. I, I just didn't know where these numbers came from. Is this like considered like a, you know, a significant unit such that, you know, it's going to be some sort of permitting done on some basis? Is that it, Sam?
So these are your standard, what you see in homes where there's limitations through NFPA. This is, this is right out of NFPA eight fifty-five. And they are numbers that change. Uh, the first one in here is a good example, the lead acid NFPA changed with the latest addition to seventy kilowatts versus fifty. Uh, you know, I made the change in our bylaw and I have it on the books to change in Grovelands to catch up with it. Uh, I, I do think this is a good question for the fire engineer in NFPA to see. Is this, are these numbers set for other sections in NFPA? So they matter for that? And will it not matter for zoning if we say go to, you know, whatever, a hundred, two hundred, pick a number? Um, so yeah, I think it's a good question to ask because I don't want to be stuck changing these every time NFPA decides.
Exactly.
There's something different. So I think that's a definitely a good, uh, good question to ask.
I, I, I'm glad you're going to have that discussion. Uh, but again, I think the Brian Murphy principle is strong here. If there are some, if there are standard numbers out there that are being used by other communities, I don't know that we got to break new ground, even though.
So is that where you get the hundred, Ray? Was that like a?
Yeah, well, a hundred just comes to mind. There's another number I'm going to want to talk about between tier one or tier two, and in some communities between tier two and tier three. But I see that Rick Parker's here and he's got his hand up. Rick, do you want to unmute and say something here?
Sure. Thank, thanks, Ray. Yeah, um, I, you know, I guess for starters, I, I agree with you that, you know, the first, uh, section there, uh, you know, nine dot, dot, ten, dot, three, small a, um, most of those technologies, I, I, I don't know why the, these are in here. Um, you know, I, I won't claim to be an expert on batteries, but I, I, I do a lot of reading on, on this subject. I'm you know, probably more up to date than most people are. And, um, you know, lead acid is, you know, it's an old technology. Nobody's installing lead acid. It, it, for battery, you know, for, for large-scale battery storage, nobody in their right mind would use lead, use lead acid. Nobody in their right mind would use nickel. In fact, what you do is you try to use as little nickel as you possibly can because of the cost of the material. Um, and, and that's a huge thing in, in the development currently of new lithium ion technologies. Um, trying to minimize use of nickel and ultimately with a goal of changing the chemistry and even re- eliminating nickel because it is so expensive and it's also considered to be a toxic material. Um, sodium nickel chloride. I, uh, I'm, I'm unaware of that as a commercial, uh, commercial battle, battery technology. Um, flow is something that we're going to probably see over time. Um, there are different, um, flow battery chemistries. Um, and, um, you know, flow is something that we have, that we will see more of, I expect, over the course of the next five to 10 years. Um, and at some point, there'll be a technology that, that, um, proves to be viable for specific types of applications and, and is adopted, you know, and, you know, sort of broadly adopted. But, you know, that, that may well start with, um, military applications. Um, because of certain unique characteristics of, of flow type batteries. Um, and, well, the other one, other battery technologies with the capacity. Uh, so, okay, so that's the first thing on, on the, the different battery technologies. And, and that's a really, you know, gross, um, generalization and simplification of it. Um, again, I'm not a battery technology, uh, engineer or scientist. Um, you know, the size seventy kilowatts are, I guess it's not clear to me what scale. Um, I'm just looking at this one page right now. It's not clear to me at what scale, um, the goal is to, um, to have control. Um, my understanding, and I can't point to the specification, but I thought there was actually a, um, somewhere probably in mass electrical code. But I'm not sure that's where it is, but I thought there was a limitation to, um, twenty kilowatt hours for, um, battery storage within a structure, within, you know, within a living structure. And, 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 um, and Sam, you may know something about that, but, but, you know, I thought there was already some existing, um, uh, code about what could be deployed, that would be for, you know, basically homeowner-type sizes. Um, and, and if it was larger than that, it had to be, um, installed, um, in a separate, um, you know, fire protection, fire protected enclosure, um, external to the living space.
Yep. So, sorry.
Okay. And then, and then the size in general, again, I'm not sure what, what the goal is to limit. Uh, by the way, I think this is a great idea. I think we ought to have a battery storage by, you know, uh, attempted to, you know, working to address large scale. But these numbers are tiny, even the seventy kilowatt hours, it's tiny. I mean, that's.
So keep in mind, these, these are exempt from the bylaw.
Oh, oh, okay. So these are all, these are size that are all exempt from the bylaw.
Yeah. So if you're below these numbers, you'd have it by right, but just because you have a, the ability to install it by right, uh, doesn't mean you can ignore the building code. So you'd still be subject, subject.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah. Right, right. App, app, yeah, absolutely. Um.
So just to, to answer your question before you get too far, because I can't think and hold too many questions.
Okay, sorry, sorry, Sam.
That's okay. So as far as the old technology, the only, again, these are exempt. And this includes modifications. So there are still some lead acid out there. I run into them once in a while. Uh, most of them, uh, it's probably been a year or two since I've seen one. Um, the other ones, like you said, yeah, we never see them. They are out there, but they're almost never used. The Tesla Power Wall, like, uh, Ray has on the side here, thirteen point five. If you have two of them, you're at twenty-seven kilowatts. The limit under the, the, uh, building code and the electrical code, fire code is that thirty kilowatt. And what we don't want without some regulation and the, although they'd be captured in the bylaw, it really, most of that would be captured under the building code, like you said, with a fireproof enclosure, with potential for sprinkling, all these other things that come into play. So they're already captured. But this would additionally capture them if we want to sew way in, if someone's doing something outrageous. For the most part, we wouldn't, we wouldn't even look at it. You know, me as the zoning, uh, you know, enforcement officer, if someone came in and said, hey, I want three power walls, which, I mean, I've seen. Um, we have one right on Main Street that was just done. They built a fireproof enclosure in the basement. It's got two hour fighting, fire ratings around it, a separate monitored alarm system. I don't think they're gaining a whole heck of a lot by throwing a third one in there other than aggravation and cost, but that's, that's their thing to do. So, um, and again, these numbers, keep in mind, this goes back to Ray's initial question, or I guess the, the question we want to ask is if these are changed in the bylaw, does it have any effect on the bylaw? I know if they're changed within NFPA, there's a definitive effect. Which is why they have these thresholds as to how they handle these situations. It, it may not have any effect. We may be able to just go like raise it, you know, hundred kilowatts, uh, just so we have a kind of a clean slate. And as technology advances, we, you know, we're not having to deal with a bylaw. So hopefully that answers your, your question.
And did I, uh, did I see your hand up?
So I want to, to, I'm not as, uh, familiar with the details of this as several of you are, obviously, but, uh, in the spirit of the way we like to do things, which is efficiently and, uh, within a flexibility to not drive ourselves crazy in the future. Is this a point, a place where the logical extension of, shall we call it Murphy's Law, is rather than give any specificity, just to refer to say that it should be in compliance with NFPA eight fifty-five? Then is it changes there recovered? Or, or is that too non-reactive?
Might be too broad because there's multiple codes and standards that cover these. So it's not just NFPA fifty-five. Yeah, NFPA eight fifty-five is usually the starting point that all the other codes derive from. Um, yeah, like I said, I, I think this is a good question to just touch base with, um, with NFPA and see what the reason is behind it. And if it's not a reason we need in zoning, then we can, can alter it.
Now, let me, uh, let me jump ahead here. The next, the next thing that comes, uh, to end up play here is this classification is tier one or tier two. And tier two are the really big ones, Deb. Um, a megawatt hour is a lot. But it's not a lot for the kind of installation that they'd be putting behind the church. Um, so, and I, I point this out. I don't know if the others had a chance to look at it, but a lot of stuff kicks in if you got tier two that doesn't kick in if you've got tier one. And also, this is, uh, uh, Sam suggesting here, the one megawatt hour. What I found out there is the typical value is six hundred, uh, kilowatt hours. I have no objection to the one megawatt hour, but I'm thinking, and, and as I look through others, it, it's sort of the tier one is sort of like not addressed that much in this proposed bylaw. Tier two, you get into all kinds of setback requirements and stuff that makes sense to me.
Yeah, so.
If, if I were going to go to a real simple code, and, and I'm not saying we should, but I would say you got two situations. You got, regardless of the technology, I'll just throw this out here, a hundred kilowatt hours or below, it's allowed by right. You have to, you have to obey the building codes, of course. If it's over a hundred kilowatt hours, instead of distinguishing between a tier one and a tier two, just make everything just everything is the same sort of battery energy storage system. And, and, and that, I think, would simplify stuff. And it would require, if you had a, if you had a seven hundred and fifty kilowatt hour installation, in a lot of towns, that would be tier two. In our town, it wouldn't be. Just screw it. And anything that's more than a small residential thing, then this, this would apply.
So my, my only comment with that is similar to, or, or just going back to the, the gent that just put the three power walls in. He would technically fall into the tier one currently. If we were, and, and say decided to do four instead of, you know, three, to have that jump to a tier two standard is really cost prohibitive. So that tier one gives the, if you really want to, you know, push the battery thing in your, your home, especially if we look at the new, um, specialized energy code, which goes to a potential net zero. You're going to need more storage capacity than your standard couple of power walls. So you might end up in that tier one, which we may want to have, you know, input from the fire department, from planning, from building as to, hey, depending on what you're doing, we want to, might want to have some say into it. But not to the extent where we want to send them through a full tier two battery system type of study.
Gotcha. But, but again, if, if you were to, uh, set that number, that original number to a generous, high home number, then even with four Tesla Power Walls or whatnot, you wouldn't be kicked in. But I mean, obviously, there's concern when you get into these really, so, uh, all batteries are stored potential energy. The more stored potential energy you have in a concentrated area, the bigger the potential for, uh, disaster and explosion, whether it's, uh, stored water or, or, or high-pressure gases or electricity, whatever. Um, and so obviously, there's a concern here that if you've got one of these big installations, like potentially what would go behind the church. Um, you have to have good access fire vehicles and you have to have good buffering and you have to have all these other requirements which show up in the bylaw. So I don't, I don't know what tier, having a distinguished, having a tier one here, I don't know what that gets us. Um, and I, I appreciate what you say there, Sam, but if, if somebody's got a, you know, five hundred kilowatt hour battery storage system on, on a lot someplace, that could still, that could still cause a hell of a, hell of a fire.
I, I agree. And, you know, and I mean, it's, it's basically, this is a small, medium, large setup. If you want to just do small and large, um, I don't see that being problematic, other than, like I said, just checking with the fire folks to see if there's something in their expertise that we're not seeing. And then does it matter in a zoning setting versus NFPA setting?
If you just have that discussion with these people, then I'm satisfied. And I, I would, I would defer to your judgment on all this stuff. Um, these are just things that, that I, you know, came to my mind. I don't know, anybody else, uh, at this point want to weigh in?
And just to let you know, I'm far from an expert. Uh, this is through many hours of sitting with the experts, spoon-feeding me a lot of information and hand-holding to get understanding. So.
Gotcha. Well, you know more than I do, Sam, and I respect that.
I'm, I'm good with questions.
So, uh, so the difference here is that tier one doesn't require a special permit and tier two does?
Yeah, well, it just requires minor site plan review. Do we define that anywhere?
I don't, that's a new challenge for me.
Think further in this, there is a minor site plan review. And I mean, you, I, if I, yeah, check on that because I, I, I don't want to mix my two-town zoning, but I believe it is defined in here that deals with, um,
Okay, let's see.
Uh, basically, you know, plantings and, you know, essentially being a, a sensitive to a butter's and having access. But, um, yeah.
That's, that's where I came up with all these good ideas on setback and buffers and stuff. I thought, well, that, that's good for tier one too, but.
Yeah. Sam, where, where does, uh, Groveland have in mind to put something? And are they talking about a, a, a big system or?
Um, so we, we did adopt the, the bylaw last year. Uh, basically, right now, the one location that's being looked at is by our own power company, uh, which is, is convenient. So we can, you know, potentially have a practice run uh, with our own guys dealing with it. Uh, one of the concerns, and I know Angus had this concern because he sent me something over the weekend about, uh, uh, some Western Mass, I think it was Pittsfield or something like that. Uh, article was where do they get located and at which zone and all that? Really where they get located is where the existing infrastructure is. If you don't have power lines, you know, your, your high tension lines close enough, it becomes not really cost-effective to run the infrastructure to them.
Yeah, it's like locating the solar power plant, same kind of idea.
You, you got it. You know, you know, can you do it? Sure. You know, is it cost-effective to do it? Probably not. So like the, the one, um, one of the locations in West Newbury that I was approached about was, uh, the last lot on Major Boyd Drive that was all the way down the hill behind it. Um, it's right under the power lines. It's all rocky. It, it's really not good for much. Um, I don't, I think they, they walked away and decided not to, but that was one of the triggers why I thought, geez, we, I, I, we better get this in place before someone comes in. I'd rather have regulation there that might not be perfect than have nothing and have them come in and just, you know, say, hey, we'll, we'll feed you what we want. At least this gives us that opportunity to say, you know, especially stuff like equipment for the fire department, training, uh, emergency protocols, those types of things to have in place. But, um, you know, decommissioning, same things we have with solar.
Yep. Well, Sam, right here on, on this page, page four or nine, for example, it talks about, uh, vegetation and tree cutting for tier two. It talks about setbacks for tier two, dimensional controls for tier two. Why aren't these good ideas for tier one?
They could be. We just didn't feel, you know, for, for the most part in Groveland, when we went through a lot of this, um, we found those tier one systems with our current setbacks and what we have for locations that might be potential. It wasn't going to be a concern. It wasn't going to be a concern. Our our power lines run through a location in town that is either our industrial district, which is, you know, any development there is going to be subject to some site plan review. And then it goes through wetlands, which, you know, where, or natural heritage locations, so obviously, we're not going to put batteries in the wetland, at least not yet.
Yeah, I guess, I guess what I would say here is that in the final bylaw, that that each one of these areas, like vegetation, tree cutting, there should be a, there should be a subsection, little I, subsection, little two, double I, where, double I, tier one. You know, you gotta comply with existing bylaws. Tier two, then you have this language setbacks. Tier one, comply with existing tier two, these, or that sort of thing, because right now, if I'm contemplating a tier one, I don't get the guidance here.
Right. Well, which we have to do, if we have to do some kind of site plan review, however minor, we need some standards that we can test against. Just so we know what we're looking at.
Yeah, I think that's pretty easily doable.
Yeah, and by the way, when I came down here, stored combustible materials, hazardous material, high piled storage and all this kind of stuff.
What is that?
That, well, right down here in in the, in this text, it it, there's setbacks in addition, a minimum ten feet and stuff. I was thinking like, your setback should apply to all this stuff. And if you've got a high piled storage, then you should, it's not just the building, but.
Well, the setbacks between the B E S S components. So usually, your your components now aren't in a single building. They're they're containerized, if that's a word, brought in, and most of those containers are self-contained systems that are that plug into each other.
That's just fine. So I guess what I could say here is that tier two battery and energy storage systems and all pertinent storage structures, et cetera. I, you know, I I add something here to be clear, because there's a bunch of stuff down here that doesn't seem to be necessarily what we got up here. But that's just, that's just me looking at it, wanting to be very clear about setbacks to what.
Yeah, so up up top is the setbacks from the facility itself. The lower sentence is from those components to each other onsite. So, yeah.
I understand.
wording can be clever.
I guess what I'd say again, battery energy storage systems and all pertinent structures and components or something like that. Because if I come up here to the definition of battery energy storage system, it's a different thing. A better energy storage management system. This just refers to the electronic system. It doesn't refer to the buildings and all the other components. So I can't have a setback to the B E S S. So I have to have a setback to the B E S S and all pertinent structures and components and storage, et cetera.
Gotcha.
Yeah, Ray, yeah, let me just say, I mean, I don't know, I don't know of any of this. This is not my area at all. I I can't even picture what these things look like, how big they are, how, anything. And I know we don't have a planner, because I would ask the planner to to provide some images and whatnot for us. So, I'm gonna throw that out for Sam, and I don't know how soon until we get a planner, but if if this is coming back for this fall, could we get some images or something to?
Yeah, absolutely.
People like me understand what the hell this thing is?
Yeah, and these are, yeah, people typically don't understand. These are massive. These are acres of battery packs. You know, they're they're not a, you know, a little outbuilding or anything like that.
I know, that's what I'm struggling with, when we talk about setbacks and screening.
It kind of looked like a bunch of shipping containers that are
Exactly.
laid out on a grid.
Yes.
Yeah, it's a forty foot shipping container unit is is a one megawatt. I think that's like the package unit that I'm familiar with.
They're not real pretty, Brian.
No, it looks like a forty foot, you know, trailer.
Wow.
The proposal for All Saints, originally it was about eighty five hundred square feet they wanted off, and they've increased it to about twelve thousand square feet. So I don't even know.
Rick, Sam, how many acres is that?
How many what?
Twelve thousand square feet.
About a quarter of an acre.
Quarter and a half.
Yeah, and then you put the setbacks and whatnot around it. You actually need a pretty big chunk of land.
You do. And the likelihood of, honestly, of us getting one of these and having a lot that works for it, I'd never say never, but I'd be very surprised.
Sam, I have.
You can see something like this tie into, to, for example, behind the solar installation below the school, since you've already got the tie into the grid there and and, yeah.
Oh, boy.
Yeah, that's.
I know, I know.
It's like having a rail yard in the, next to the school. So, Sam, when you say it has to be near the power lines, but you're talking about Grovelands in a way that confused me. Are we talking about just the big distribution lines along Main Street? Or are we talking about the actual pylons and the transmission?
Yes, your transmission, your your huge, the ones that run, you know, cut across town and you see on the maps.
They can actually interconnect with both, though. They can, yeah, they can interconnect distribution and transmission. This is kind of big in Connecticut now, so in there, interconnecting in both.
I see, I see Rick's hand is up again, Rick. Thanks, Rick. Yeah, so I believe that in Archie, come here. The Massachusetts Smart Program now for any solar installation greater than, it's either five hundred kilowatts or one megawatt. It's required that battery backup be installed with it. Right. If if I'm not mistaken.
I think you're right.
And and and, you know, these are not that, you know, you you put them so they're not, you know, so they're not highly visible. They're, you know, it isn't, it isn't like a freight yard. That's, you know, I think that's kind of a gross exaggeration. And and you know, I could see in, you know, in in West Newbury, if for instance, in the future, there was something done to service a school, say, say there was a new school built, where Paige currently is. And the field behind Paige, which is one of the sites that was looked at in in solar site feasibility study. You know, it's a gradually sloping, north-facing slope. North-facing isn't ideal, but it just means you spread out the solar more. And that would probably be a site, or that might well be a site that was large enough to justify not to solar, but putting in battery backup, which would then help support the grid. It would provide backup power for the facility that was the off-taker for the energy produced by the solar. You know, these battery energy storage is is becoming common. And we're not that far from the point where it's going to be ubiquitous.
Right.
And and it's going to be a part of our power grid. It's going to be a necessary component, part of our power grid. You know, so I I guess I just want to make the point that this is not an outlier, and it's going to in fact become very common. So it's it's smart to have, you know, a bylaw that controls it in a way that, you know, we believe fits West Newbury's needs, but.
Yeah. The ones that are, that do look like freight yards, like are the ones that like support data centers and things like that. There are giant deployments of these, you know, around, but that wouldn't be West Newbury. I think you're right, you know.
I know somebody in in New York State who's in the business. And for them, a standard module size is, it's either five megawatt hours or ten megawatt hours. Are their standard module sizes. They don't, I mean, that's not like a single container, but that's, if they build a system, it's either in a, in five megawatt hour, ten megawatt hour increments. And and you know, you don't, you don't do this at a small scale. It doesn't make sense at a small scale. It doesn't provide much benefit and the, and the numbers don't pencil out. It just doesn't make sense. Which is, which is why my concern, like if I'm looking over here for screening and mitigation of loss of forest and trails and whatnot. See, I see all this stuff as good stuff. Why, why should we let tier one off the hook?
Sure.
Stuff as well. Yeah, and then I, maybe Rick, you might even have an opinion on this, I don't know, but this whole thing about failed battery cells and modules shall not be stored on the site. This strikes me as, I I under, I think there's good intentions here, but you could have a failed battery, you could, you could have failed cells within a battery in the system for a couple of months. And the system's still working fine. But then technically by this, it should be removed, but you're leaving it up to the operator to decide what has failed or whatnot. This, this just strikes me as pretty silly.
I think it it comes down to stored, or if it's in operation, I wouldn't consider it stored. And we could certainly clarify that if, you know, non-operable.
That, great, something like that, yeah, the facility should, will not be used to store.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That was our our intent in in writing that, was it, it was truly storage of those failed components, you know.
Yeah, that's good. I'm fine with that. Yeah, yeah. I hope I didn't cut you off there, Rick. No, 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 I I don't, you did not. Okay, good, good. And then, you know, everything else struck me as is just fine. I don't know if anybody else wants to weigh in on.
They said the abandonment stuff needs to be cleaned up, Ray, that section at the end. It's a great idea to have an abandonment obligation and a liability for the owner, if they don't.
And once again, they're just saying tier two here, but wouldn't we want a tier one to be dealt with if it were abandoned as well?
Yeah, sure, yep.
That's why I keep coming back to, you know.
So I don't, I don't know, I I mean, I can provide some comments, Sam, but you know, usually in an abandonment provision like this, like in the solar and others, you know, it's introduced that the town can do this, but doesn't have the obligation, you know, to undertake this. And then everything's done at the expense of the owner, if the town has to do this. And we can use the security that they place, but it's not just limited to the security that, you know, even if there is an adequate security placed, or if there isn't, you know, if this isn't a tier two facility, it would still be at the owner's cost if they were just to leave all the equipment out there for the town to decommission it.
Yeah, no, any, any add-ins or comments, it's all good. This was a first run at something. Most of us had nothing, no experience, and we brought in the experienced guys. I think in having more eyes on it, more revisions will get to a a better bylaw.
Yeah, I I agree with Rick here. This is, I'm I'm really glad that you've undertaken this. I'm really glad that this is moving forward. Thank you so much for all the work here. You know, that abandonment clause, I think we we've got those for for other the cell towers, I think, we probably have it for the wind turbine, so we can pretty much steal language there. When you get a planner, it'd be pretty easy to just kind of clean all that stuff up, I would think.
Yep, I agree. The only other thing I would say is if the timeline is too short for a fall town meeting, I don't think this is urgent in a way that we need to rush anything. It was just, I, Angus was asking for placeholders. This was back when we had a planner. It was a little more feasible. I I know right now, it's it's a real tight deadline. I mean, it's still a placeholder on the agenda or on the the potential warrant, but it it's totally up to you guys. I'm, I I'm not you know, opposed to waiting and I'm not opposed to sending it through ASAP, so.
Well, I'll let the others weigh in on it, but it strikes me as unrealistic to get this all cleaned up and have the public hearings and whatnot for the fall. I think it makes sense to, I I think spring is quite realistic.
Agree.
I agree.
Yep.
It it might, it might be good to have something available, information about lithium storage batteries that the townspeople could have at the fall meeting.
You know, normally, we don't do a little, much of a report at at fall town meeting, but we we could do a little report from the planning board, just a paragraph and mention that we're working on this and interested parties can
Yeah.
find out more about it here or there.
Or Sam could give the report.
Yeah, yeah. I know, he likes being up in front of a crowd.
I love it.
Oh, there's Rick. Rick's really gonna say something about the energy committee. Well, no, actually, that wasn't it. I I think if you do, if you were to decide to say something about this at the special town meeting, that you might ask you might provide opportunity for people who have knowledge for, there's a good chance that there's somebody in this town that we don't even know at this point is in the business, is actually in the battery storage business. I mean, I know somebody who, until recently was, and I wouldn't recommend, you know, I wouldn't point to that person. But I I I know another person who isn't in this, even in the state. I mean, there are a lot of people in this business now, and I think it would be good for the planning board to try to gain some knowledge from somebody who's actually in the industry, and you'd learn a lot. Point taken. Yeah, so, you know, there's a good chance that somebody in this town is actually in this business already. Well, you know why there are people in the business, too. I mean, there's a lot of reasons why it makes sense. But it also makes a lot of money. Yeah, absolutely, yep. That, just, just a quick aside, there was a, there's a group of there's a company in in England, and they set up these really nice places for charging electric vehicles, and they got it, they they hooked it up to a solar field and they had a battery storage thing. And within a month, they found out they were making way more money off their battery storage system than they were making charging up electric cars and selling coffee. Yeah, battery storage, yeah, there's all sorts of advantages, but, yeah, I mean, one of the money ways to make money of is basically through arbitrage. You buy, you you, you know, you buy energy cheap, you store it, and you deploy it when it's, when it has a higher value.
Absolutely.
And that that's, you know, that's part of the model. One of the things that the town, the select, the select board is going to have to be careful about here is not to get ripped off, because these are big money-making systems. And, yeah. Okay, all right, all right. If if it's okay, I'd like to move on to the second item on the agenda. I'm gonna duck out. Thanks, everybody. Bye-bye. Thank you. Thank you. Which is talking about a table for use with the zoning bylaw, and I think I can sure, the tables are kind of a thing that I love. I'm I'm not sure how everybody feels about it, though.
So, just to give you some background, I had Jen send this, because this is something actually me and Leah were working on. We both took a shot at taking the bylaw and tablizing the uses. And thankfully, we came up with the same answers, so that at least was good. The really difficult part was trying to clean up our bylaw, because the uses aren't aren't all in one section. They are all over the place and not in any rhyme or reason or you know, I I was hopeful that it would all be in like section three, where we could just cross that off, put it in the table and say, you know, is your table of uses? It's a mess.
Even after we reorganized it.
Oh, it's it's reorganized nice, but there's so many ifs and buts and you you know, and and that's, we we ended up tabling it to do some other stuff. We never got back to it. Me and Sue were gonna pick it up. We didn't get to it. I said to Jen when we brought her on, this is one of the things we have to do, because what I, what we're asked, we being planning, zoning, you know, building, what can I do with my lot? And without a use table to just scan homeowners, you know, potential buyers, realtors, architects, builders, they all come in, and we spend a ton of time just walking through it. This isn't to change any uses. Again, I'm, I'm an outsider. My goal here is to make usable documents, not to push the town. My goal here is to make usable documents, not to push the town in any direction. One of the things our bylaw is definitively lacking is a use table. Um, so there's, I guess, two ways to go about it, one is to just introduce a use table and leave everything where it is, and. I don't particularly like that, cause it's sloppy, and that could potentially lead to mistakes later, having this, you know, information duplicated throughout the document. I'd rather fix it and get rid of the extra language, but that's gonna take a while, so this was really just a. Hey, uh, you know, it's something I, I, I'd like to tackle maybe for next fall or the following spring of twenty-six. Um.
Well, I, I like this, I mean, it, in the interim, you know, a column could be added, and, you know, giving the reference. Of the bylaw where you can look it up.
Well, and that, that was the question too, is if we keep it, certainly we can add that column to go, okay, here's where it is.
What, what is, uh, what is NP?
Uh, where are we? Like, oh, uh, not permitted.
Not permitted.
So. I, the very last, I don't know, I think the organization of it like graphically is very confusing to me right now, it's sorted by. P versus NP or whatever, I, SP, uh, you know, at the bottom dwelling up to four units, isn't that the same as a one, two, three, or four? You know, is that the same as a three to four family dwelling?
Not according to our bylaws. That's the problem we have, is we've got some redundant or different language, so. You know, uh, it, it's. It needs to be cleaned up, you know, and I didn't wanna delete anything from the table, even if it was similar or repetitive.
Well, it's, it's, it's a good reason to do it, because you can, you can see quickly where there are. Problems.
Yeah, I mean, it, it just, um. And this isn't a final, this was just a, again, this was the first. Run through, I have, uh, Leah's copy too, just to see. Where we ended up, and again, running through it, we ended up basically the same, I just use, you know. P for permitted, NP for not permitted, and SP for special permit, she went further to. Um, define is the special permit planning or zoning.
And, and what's RFA, RFP, RFC?
So those, those were my guides, um, those really don't even belong there, so it's a reduced frontage lot stats.
Ah.
Uh, you can see by the tack holes in the top that this usually hangs over my desk, so I have a quick reference. And I, I pull it down frequently, uh, when too many holes get there, I print a new one.
This, this thing here has been so useful to you. That, that you have it right there and are, are pulling it off the wall all the time.
It is, if not, uh. Possibly not daily, but definitely at least weekly.
Well, then, that I think that's, that's a strong statement of why we should incorporate this for everybody.
Absolutely.
I think we should incorporate some kind of table. I don't think we should wait until we have all the rest of it cleaned up, because I think we can put a note on this saying. You know, there's whatever for the language of the bylaw or whatever, but this is a, this is the quick reference guide or something like that.
Yep.
The only other suggestion I might make, although this kind of groups things by types right now, so I'm a little reluctant, but I'm gonna say it anyway. Is to alphabetize the uses. Cause that would make me crazy if a client were to figure out, could they do? You know, a music school, I don't know, but I wouldn't know where to look, and that way I could at least look under M or S. And maybe have a chance.
And then I got a question for you, Sam, that I'm embarrassed not to know, and that's, what if you got, what if you wanna do something that's not on the list?
Uh, that's one of the problems we have. Then it is not permitted.
Gotcha.
And that's a big problem, we need that language. Um, going back to ands, if you look at this. In the way that the questions are typically asked.
Yeah.
It, it makes sense, you can see that all the Ps are up top, and, and those are your typical residential.
No, I get that, I see that sort. Yeah, and I see that things are grouped with like things together, so that was my reluctance, but. I don't know.
Then if you scroll down, you can see what comes up for your business and industry.
Well, you could also have subsections in that left-hand column, you could leave a spit line, blank line, and then you could have. You know, I don't know, all caps, commercial or business, or, you know, you could. Whatever.
It's a good stamp, if, why is this blank here, three to four family dwelling in residential A?
Yeah, I don't know.
Um, cause it's silent. It doesn't say it's permitted, it doesn't say not permitted, so anywhere that it's silent. There's a blank, so if you scroll down to the next page and see all the blanks.
Yeah.
Um, which by default, the way our bylaw is written, it is. It would end up being not permitted, even though our bylaw.
The ones that say NP here, these few, those are specifically mentioned as not permitted?
They're prohibited, yeah.
Hey, one observation. I think a crematorium doesn't have an A in it, you're not making milk.
Oh, yeah. Well, maybe I am.
Hopefully not at the same facility.
Yes, thank you, that's a, that's a good correction.
I, Sam, no, I think this is, this is very interesting, it's, it's gonna be a good basis. So, were you looking to have this implemented this fall?
No, no, um, my, my goal here was just to bring it to the group to. Let you get your heads around that this is something I think we should do if the group is, you know, the, the planning board says yes. Then.
I like it, yeah.
You know, me and whoever the new planner is, along with Jen. Can look at different ways of making this clear to present options to the board. And then we can go from there, again, it's.
Yeah, I was gonna say, let's see what the, it's a.
I mean.
Easy way for the new planner to get their head into the game here anyway.
I also, I also suggest that there are diff- different ways to use this, I mean, one is just a, this is just a useful. Auxiliary sheet that, you know, we put up on the inter- interwebs and everybody has access to it. And then you can carry it right on down to the point where you're actually incorporating it into a by, into the bylaws someplace in the future. So it can be very informal and be used right away without any big deal.
I, I like, that's a good idea, Ray, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. The other thing is between the planner, Jen, and Sam, you guys will have seen and obviously have access to. Many different zoning bylaws, like I, I think. That Salisbury has a really good table of uses, as I recall, may have changed, used it, but. You know, there's some good ones out there graphically that you could take a look at.
Yeah, and this was something that when Jen came in. Uh, we talked about that this was one of my initiatives to have us work on, you know, me being, at the time it was Sue, Jen and I. Um, now whoever the new planner is, Jen and I, to. Have a collaborative effort is to how to make the table the most user-friendly, not just. You know, I, I made the table. What I needed, um, that doesn't necessarily mean it's the most and best way to do it. And I think, yeah, having, uh, you know, Jen or myself or whoever the new person is, check some other. Local communities to see how they broke it down. Um. Cause again, even just me and, uh, Leah going off on our own and deciding, okay, let's do this, we came up with. Different, relatively similar but different layouts, so, uh, this was more just a. Uh, you know, cursory shot over the bow of, hey, you know. Is this a direction where?
Well.
You know, I should spend effort, and, you know.
Once again, Sam, I'm thanking you for your work here, this is another good thing that, that really can help the town out, thank you. Any, uh, any objection for going on to the, to, uh, the third, uh. Agenda item with Sam?
No, let's.
All right, and that's, that's, uh, suggestions for changes to the, uh, ADU bylaw. Already.
I know, it kills me.
We, Ray, we talked about this last week, I don't know if you.
Oh, okay, I didn't, I didn't know that, so is this? Is, is this just a?
This is the state.
Yeah, reacting to the state law. It's, it's disturbing because it drops some of the things we'd like to see.
Right.
But we, we wanted you to be able to weigh in on this.
Okay.
So, the Affordable Homes Act took away some of our ability to regulate accessory dwelling units, both attached and detached. The redline version, I've taken out or modified what the new law requires. Uh, there's nothing additional in, under the law, it does allow for other reasonable, um. Uh, regulations. The Executive Office of Housing and Livable Conditions. Was given the authority by the governor to give us guidance on that. Unfortunately, in the law, they put that they may give us guidance, and as of right now, they are choosing not to give us guidance. Uh, I am currently working with the, uh. Federation of Building Officials, uh, Architect AIA. Um, going to the state to get them to put pressure on EOHLC to give us some guidance. Um, other than that, we, we have kind of two options here, one is. Um, well, three options, one is do nothing. Um, the law will supersede what we have in the bylaw, wait, and see what we get. Uh, option two is implement for fall town meeting, the. Changes that I proposed that reflect the law. Uh, the third option is put it off till spring and see if there's additional things we can put in here.
Yeah, I, I actually, I'm okay with all three approaches, what, what are the other planning board members?
I think I like one and three best, because was, was two to make the changes? I, I'm a little reluctant to spend our capital making changes and then have to come in the spring and make more changes if guidance does eventually come out. So I, they lay low. Let this stand, uh, Sam can always say to folks, you know, in his own way, uh. Guess what, this new bylaw supersedes it, so there are a few things that have changed, but just, just kinda wait and see what they do.
Yeah, and a, a lot of towns are in that position, cause they're not having a fall town meeting, Groveland being one of them. Um, I checked with council, the law supersedes our bylaw, so whether we change it or not. The law stands, it does add to confusion, or those neighbor complaints of, hey, how come they're putting a, you know, a unit in the backyard and. Not following our bylaw. Uh, ours isn't as bad, cause we, we just opened it up to detached. Groveland is gonna cause a, a good amount of issue, cause we do not allow them. So now to have that popping up in your neighbor's yard. Without having a special permit, any forewarning, any bylaw change, uh, probably isn't gonna sit well with folks, but.
Yeah, but it is what it is.
Yeah, yeah, I'm not gonna.
Your hands are tied there.
If they wanna challenge it, they can go ahead and challenge it. Um, so, yeah, I, I. Initially, I was very much for, let's make the change and be prepared. Before the February second, uh, just to, to go back, the, the. Law goes into effect for this portion of the Affordable Homes Act, the hundred and eighty days after it was signed into law, which is February second of twenty twenty-five. Um. I don't, you know, initially I thought changing it might get us ahead of the curve. The more I delve into it and deal with other regulating authorities and opinions. Um, I mean, even conflicting opinions between Groveland and West Newbury's legal counsel. Um.
Right.
Uh, yeah, yeah, you know, I, I, and even some of the, the legal counsel I've gotten from them, I find it very ea- easy to. Argue their opinions. Um. So without that guidance from EOHLC. Uh, I'm leaning towards the option three of. Sit on our hands, wait till we get guidance, and if it's the spring we make changes, we make it then, or if it's next fall, make it then.
That makes sense to me.
I, I, I like that approach.
A hundred percent, yep. Yeah, two weeks ago I was for changing it, which is why I brought it to you guys, in that two weeks, and the feedback I've gotten from state agencies. Um. I, 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 I think you're just in a, a, a holding pattern is the best pattern to be in, and wait for others to go through the mess first, or. The one agency that has the authority to give guidance to actually step up and give us guidance.
Well, it seems like. Go ahead, Deb.
The, the change that seemed to be the most different was that our bylaw. An owner had to occupy one of the units.
Mm-hmm.
Other than that, are there other changes that are profound? I mean, if somebody comes in and wants to build an ADU. Um. Can't, can we still talk about it?
Um, it's. That's the biggest change with West Newbury's.
Yeah.
So we actually were way ahead of the curve, the owner occupied thing, I think is a huge mistake that they've taken that out.
Me too.
That allows for developers to come in, buy houses, build second units on the lot, rent them both out.
Yep.
Um, I brought up the condo. Scenario to, uh, council, and their opinion initially was. If you conduit, the smaller unit is no longer accessory to the larger unit. And at first I was like, okay, I can get behind that, and then I thought about it, and I, I said, well. If there's no owner occupancy, and I rent both of them. What's the difference? You know, it's, there's still a subordinate unit based in law that's limited to nine hundred square feet.
Yeah.
It's just a, a form of ownership difference, and typically, we're not allowed to regulate. Uh, ownership in that way, so I, I said, you know. Not, not to not counsel, I mean, I think it's a good position to take initially and stand our ground, cause that's what we want, we don't wanna condos, but. Again, this is where we're looking for that guidance, can we prohibit condoing in our document to ensure that it just doesn't happen?
Yeah.
Um, so, yeah, I, I, again, I think at this point, um. Everyone's equally frustrated with the, the, uh, the new law, and, uh. Are all waiting to see who gets sued first to set some precedent, so we know what to do. Uh, and I think the safest route is to, to sit on our hands and, uh. You know, just let people do what the law allows, which isn't huge. From what we were allowing to begin with, so. You know, I, I, I very much hate the sit on your hands approach, usually, I'm, I'm much more be proactive, but. Uh, like I said, two weeks has made all the difference on this one for me.
Well, Sam, I, uh, I'm behalf of the other board members here, I appreciate all the work you've been doing in the background on all this stuff, thank you.
Yeah, it's, it's not, uh, completely un, unselfish, but it does make my job easier when I have easier things to work with, so. Uh, I, I gotta, I gotta host in the race despite not living i- in town.
Yeah, yeah. I also, I also appreciate your, uh, your coming on and, and being in the meeting here tonight, so thank you for that.
Anytime, and that, that was it for me, right?
I think so.
Yes.
I think so.
Awesome.
Thank you, Sam.
I'll keep you guys updated.
Thanks, Sam.
All right, have a good one.
You too.
Right.
You know, having in-person meetings, I understand there's a lot of nice things about that, but this is just one of those examples where. It's great to have it on Zoom.
Awful nice.
Yeah, so much easier for him too, I mean.
That's what I'm thinking.
Yeah.
That's, that's why I mentioned it.
Yeah.
All right, uh, so review of the housing production plan. Um, you know, I had a good look at it, I, how much review are we doing here?
Well, I was the one who said at the last meeting, I thought we needed to go through it and see, you know, they're looking for comments.
Yeah.
A list of maybe eight or ten comments, I don't know what other people.
Good, I, I've got three, but just to refresh, I couldn't remember what. Her deadline was, or if there in fact was a deadline. Everybody remember that?
No, who's, who's shepherding this, is this?
That's, it was MVPC and, and Sue.
I don't remember.
I think she wanted it out by end of the year.
Yeah, I think there's a lot for us to comment too, and you know, the closer we get to town meeting, I think it's on their agenda for their meeting. I don't know, yeah, I, I think we should just get it done and get it back to whoever we're getting it back to.
Well, again, but, yeah, again, it, it, it is. It goes, has to go back to MVPC, be, again, Sue was the intermediary.
Right, I don't know who's managing it now, you know, my money's on Wendy, who seems to be. Person that carries a lot of water, but I don't really know.
Well, why don't, why don't we, uh, why don't we go through it?
Yeah, let's just, your comments, and then we'll figure that out.
All right. So, um, I presume you guys can see this, it's zoomed in enough?
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't know what other people have, my first one is on page five.
I have page five as well.
Okay.
Probably the same comment, Brian.
Well, I'm wondering, let's see.
Stop, 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 back up, I think this is, this is why.
This is page five.
Yes, down at the bottom, under production.
Yes.
Mention, uh, municipally owned buildings, I would not include the soldiers and sailors home, I don't know where that came from.
Oh.
Well, Mike, yes, that was. Well, Mike, yes, that was.
Got a tight tank. I think that makes no sense at all.
Well, I I just said, it's not a home.
No, and I think it's gonna start, it's gonna be like, what? We could have had a house there all this time. Uh, you know, I I I makes no sense.
And so I, you know, yeah, I I I also know other several municipal buildings that could be converted into housing.
Well, you know, I think the thing to do is just get rid of that whole whole little subparagraph there.
Would you keep the bullet point and just not identify anything?
Yeah, consider retrofitting municipally owned buildings to mix.
Yeah, I mean, you you could, you could, yeah, a blanket statement and let it linger out there.
Yeah, because I mean, if you take, if you take out the soldier and sailors thing, then there's not much left anyway.
Well, you got, you got paid school.
Well, but I think we're just letting the dogs out. We start getting specific. I just wouldn't do it.
Yeah, it's it's a broad, leave the broad statement in, but get rid of the, that that joke. Thank you, Ann. We were on the same page.
Cause I'm trying to figure out how to do.
We need to get obfuscate T-shirts, Brian.
All right, so that was page five.
Page six. This is just a question. Maybe somebody knows. I'm very leery of population projections. I didn't take the time. I'm not sure I have copies of them. I would love to know what these graphs look like in all the earlier ones, you know?
Yeah.
Are we anywhere near any kind of real projection? Even with the young kids, I mean, um, I don't know, my kids live in town. They have two kids. All their friends have two kids. Young friends just moved to town. They have one. They're trying for more. There are people walking down the main street with baby carriages and strollers all the time. I I just don't have confidence in this.
Well, M V P C doesn't either.
These projections to to and 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 the engineering professor in me is outraged because thirty eight ninety nine, really not thirty eight ninety two?
Or.
No, in twenty fifty, it's twenty nine twenty eight and not roughly three thousand?
So Deb, you were part of this? What?
Yeah, I sat in a, at the select board meeting where she made this presentation and they called her out on it too. And it just, it it does, it 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 seems very wrong. So when can math be wrong? When, when there's, there's a trend right now, but it doesn't necessarily mean that it's going to drop off. We've got all these four bedroom houses. People are going to be moving into them with children.
Well, I think math, math isn't wrong, but forecasting the future is wrong, so.
Well, let let me say, my recollection, we we all were listening in on that presentation. And I thought Angus made the point that he didn't, did not want this specificity in there because it it would cause an uproar. People, people, people said, you know, exactly what Ann just said. Who who's coming up with this stuff?
Yeah.
So my, I don't know. I thought she was going to go back and quote, fix it or take it out.
Right.
So I think there's a big, we got to put a big question mark on this.
Okay, and the other thing I wondered is, um, these are based on a, I don't know what the right word is, but, and every ten year census. And uh, do, those are federal, but do we have, you know, they, they do resident list. Do we have any better local annual population counts? I like a more granularity in my projections, please.
I I.
For my data. I don't know. I just think.
I I have a recollection of a projection ten or fifteen years ago that a a population was going to double.
Exactly. I remember like eight thousand was supposed to.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, so grain of salt. But I.
I would say that we're, we're on fairly solid ground to say that somewhere between three and twelve thousand.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so I don't know if this is all Donahue. I mean, okay, great.
Yeah, A Angus was not, I, there was a back and forth with her about it and.
Yeah.
I think it was on her plate to go figure out what the hell was going on.
All right, so noted. Next comment.
My next one was page ten.
Brian?
No, I I I, no, I must have missed that.
Well, this is, this is maybe more philosophical. I don't know. Um, so where's page ten, if I can remember? Oh, this is a weird question, but these numbers look very dramatic. Twenty ten, twenty fifteen and twenty twenty. And what I wanted to know is, are these dollars adjusted for these different increments? Because we all know what has happened to dollars, even in this ten year period.
You mean, is this adjusted for inflation?
Inflation.
Yeah, and this may not be as dramatic as it looks. I'd, I'd be surprised if they were. That seems to be, you know, maybe more than they would ask, but um, again, I don't know, maybe, I love numbers. Um, I don't know that people obsess over this the way I did. But again, I don't, you can skew things really easily in graph if you're not careful. Because it's a visual perception, you know? I don't know, maybe.
No, I agree with you.
Do what they say.
Choose, choose a year and then adjust all the numbers for that reference here, right?
I think, I mean, unless it makes it worse, of course. No, just.
And the other thing, i- if if our population is aging, it's a fact that people over sixty five who are living now on their social security instead of their hundred and fifty thousand dollar incomes are making a lot less money.
Yeah, well, those are adjusted. Again, but these are all averages and medians and I don't know.
Yeah.
They they love to represent this data and at the end of the day, um, we have to make sure that it's there for a reason that helps us plan housing.
Yep.
Okay, that's my only comment there.
I would say also that uh you want to get rid of the word change up here because now you start getting into one of those things. Are you talking about the change of something?
It's actually just, it's just.
Yeah. Good, you know, yeah.
Yeah, you could say over time, but that's.
No, no, you just, you say household income distribution, let people read it and off you go.
That's explicit. It's over time.
Because when you say change, then it's like, is that a percentage change of what it was or is that the?
Yeah. Okay, I don't have anything else till twenty two, but others may.
It's like Brian's plugging in.
Yeah, I'm I'm.
Right, losing.
Now, yeah, no, I I, my comment, next comment is on page thirty, so.
Twenty two is about flooding. A passionate subject.
All that climate change stuff is bullshit.
Exactly.
Oh, dear.
Pick one a phrase.
The oceans are gonna rise like maybe a quarter inch over the next fifty years.
Oh, here's the one. So.
This meeting is being recorded, right?
Oh, sorry.
Right, so uh, I'm near the top. The second paragraph is that flooding is considered a high risk. I don't think that's actually accurate. I think it's a strangely inflammatory thing to say. So there are areas, if you look at, I mean, I.
The road.
No, but I mean, if you look at their, their paragraph there where they give the numbers, so they're saying, I don't even know what the total number of acres is. It doesn't matter. Um, but if you look at one point eight and point nine four, that adds up to about, how did I do this? Of two to one, okay? Two to one. So if you take these two flood zones constitute nearly one fifth, eighteen point seven acres. So say it's eighteen acres. So two to one, that would mean twelve acres where the fir-, where the repri-, twelve percent was represented by the one thousand one hundred and fifty seven acres. You following me? And and six percent was represented by the six hundred and three acres, right? So a total of eighteen, so less than one fifth of the area is in any flood zone at all. That does not a high risk town make, does it?
No, we, so what I'm suggesting here is you just strike that initial line.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, or just say.
And then you just go right to a a G I S analysis and now you're just, you know, because now you're taking, it's not a judgment call. Now you just.
Right, this is just the data. And you can say, oh gee, that's not too bad. That means, you know, eighty point three.
And other people might look at that and say, well, that's, that's a super high risk, but it's a high risk, you're, you're putting an editorial judgment.
Yeah.
Well, it only applies to a tiny little swath, so.
Although if you live in that swath.
It's a big problem, yeah.
It's like being pregnant, you know, here are the odds, but when you're there, it's either a hundred or zero, so. Yeah. I mean, yeah, anyway, thank you. That would solve the problem. And I would just make that into a normal paragraph.
Exactly.
Can we just go back to pa- uh, page eighteen? I just had a question. You know, th- these, the uh, this A C S information, a lot of it is just being presented as fact, you know, so there's this paragraph that talks about the HUD, you know, cost burden, and then, you know, this is a real hot button issue right now, as everybody knows. So it says twenty percent of residents residing in West Newbury are cost burdened, but forty two percent of the renters are cost burdened. Um, that may very well be the case. I'm just, what is the source of this information? I was wondering.
Well, if you look at the graph, it it has to, I think they explain it's a percentage of what you spend on housing, right?
Yeah, no, I know that's what the, you know, the uh, measurement is, uh, but I'm just wondering, where, where is the, where, where does the fact come from? Is that, where does the data actually come from?
Sixteen, twenty twenty A C S estimates table B twenty five zero seventy.
So a four year old estimate or?
What? What's A C S?
A C S is all over this. This is, A C S is the basis for all the things we've been talking about.
I don't even know.
And A C S is American Community Surveys or something like that. Uh.
So the.
Yeah, you look at page ten, it says it's according to the twenty twenty American Community Survey, blah, blah, blah. So.
Yeah, who who made that?
I, yeah, I don't know, um, like, did they survey West Newbury or is this? I I don't know what the data source is for all this stuff.
I think the data source is they plugged in income amounts. But that's like not shown in this chart, is it? Yeah, so there's, I mean, thirty percent actually in Massachusetts these days is much to be wished for as a cost for housing. I don't think I know too many people for whom that's true. You know, you're very hot burner and bought your house a long, long time ago.
Exactly, yeah. So if you go back to page eighteen, you know, then, so they're deriving this uh statement from this data. And I don't know what the data is, approximately twenty percent of all residents are cost burdened, forty two percent of renters households are cost burdened. The percentage is uh, one in five, paying a significant portion of income on housing. So is this, was this actual data on West Newbury residents that they collected or is this some extrapolation?
Yeah, I made that kind of comment up here.
Well, I think, and and I'm, I'm, yeah, we we should find out, but I'm guessing, you know, mortgage information is tabbedized and available to different entities. And and you know, they, they can look at dollars and payment dollars and probably slice it into, you know, localities.
Well, they sure know what our taxes are, but yeah, and there's utilities and insurance and all the other things. What's included in the housing cost, you know? How much are they including?
Yeah, so I just.
I bet, I bet Brian's right. I bet there's a way in their database to pull this off.
Yeah, I I I know banks have access to all that, but I, you know, how how these people get it, I don't know. And I I guess we should.
Well, it's all public information, right? I mean.
Yes.
Not, yeah, not.
I was looking around the, you know, I know it is mortgage stuff too. I remember kind of knowing about the registry of deeds, all that stuff.
You don't, you don't get somebody's income.
That's right. You don't have the income side of it, so.
Yeah, so I'm just wondering where this, where does this coming from? So I guess, Brian, the question is, you know, like what?
Yeah, no, let's, I agree. Let's clarify it to be sure where, but I I I have, I have confidence that they're, they're not making it up, but.
Well, I'm trying to see.
I don't know, your face, your face and and the word confident seems a little, not quite all the way there.
Yeah, and it's, you know, it's twenty sixteen to twenty twenty as well, you know, as on this table, so.
Right, it could, it's probably worse, right?
It probably is worse, yeah, but I mean, it's just.
Well, mortgage rates are significantly different now than they were.
Yeah.
Well, they're back to twenty sixteen.
For new mortgages.
It's good information, I don't know. Yeah, okay.
Uh, twenty, page twenty three, we're coming to. What did I write there? Oh, this is very strange. Um, residential, oh, regulatory considerations. Okay, I see the blue.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Residential zoning. And the first sentence is, West Newbury has a few different residential zoning districts. Why don't we say?
Three.
It's not a few, it's three. Then they go on and talk about A, B, and C. So that makes no sense. That's just sloppy, isn't it?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. Well, one could say a few usually is three, but I.
Oh, no, it could be five, could be.
I I agree.
Strange to me.
Easy to say, sure.
If you're going to say it, it seems to me that that all gets repeated in the next paragraph anyway.
You know, Ann, there, there are times when I swear to God you and I are, you know, siblings.
We're grammar twins.
Yeah.
She talks about the semi.
I don't, I don't want to disparage you at all, but I just.
If we said, what if we said handful?
There's times I feel especially affectionate toward you and.
And it's always around grammar.
It's, it's around commas and things, yeah.
Anyway, let's not be sloppy.
Eliminate needless words.
Exactly. It's the Cornell factor.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I'm, I have a page twenty six beef too. This chart right here, hang on, no, the purple, one page up. These are groundwater protection overly districts. I have no doubt that we mapped these and voted for them and that they exist. But since we only have wealth fields in the easterly one, why do we have that district in the west?
That was in anticipation of the new wealth field style.
Well, I don't get rid of it and quit burdening the landowners in that area.
I think they decided.
Easy come, not easy go.
Not easy go?
It was the last year or so that they decided. I, I still don't understand the whole.
Well, if they're not.
I don't either.
Rationale.
I think, I think it should be withdrawn. I, it's not a joke. That's a burden there. All kinds of setbacks if you're in those protection districts. Now, wait for somebody down there to complain.
That's for our new planet to.
Okay, okay.
No, but I, I totally agree with you, Ann. I mean, if if we're not going to use it, if it's not necessary, then. I think you have to go back, you have to go back to a town meeting to pull that stuff out of there.
I, I understand, but this is omit needless districts. We'll put.
Yeah, that's right. That's right.
Okay, that's all.
Yeah.
Someone's going to ask about.
Why, why did that fall apart?
I, I had heard from someone that it was the, the, the state was concerned with the flooding potential or you'd have to put all the equipment up on stilts or or whatever, you know, I mean.
I don't know. Is it any worse than the Indian River flooding for the other one? Let's not even go there.
I, I.
Okay, page twenty eight. Talk about Mullen. Why did I make that note? Oh, strategy one.
Is it calling out an individual property?
Yeah, several properties in town worth considering such as the Mullen property.
Again, at that meeting, I thought Angus was, did not want to.
Right.
It's too specific.
No, and as before, I think the whole sentence could go.
Yep.
Okay.
Cataloging properties. End of story. We'll decide later if they're worth considering when they're counted, right?
Yep, yep.
You can help. Number, uh, the next page, there's something number four that I made a comment on. Oh, I see. See, strategy four, the little arrow. I think the little arrow means to be strategy five because it is followed by strategy six.
Yeah, yeah.
It's a paragraph missing.
Well, that, that this should start a new.
And that little arrow needs to go. Yeah, so this is just messed up. It's a format thing.
Yeah.
Okay, they'll, they'll grab that.
And then the thing that I noticed here is that we've got six strategies, right?
Hmm.
And then you go to this table and you got one, two, three, four, five.
Oh. Oh, is it a page?
That's, that sticks onto the end of that one.
Is a bad thing. Well, can we compare and see?
Well, if you're going to have the action plan matrix, shouldn't you ask right here, one, two, three, and?
If they.
And then aren't you, then aren't you redundant? But.
Are they the same?
Well, I I assume they were.
I mean, I mean, do they?
Strategies.
I can't look at them, I'm going to go blind with the scrolling, but someone else tell me what you conclude. Is that the first one, municipal properties?
I don't think they're in the same order, that's the problem.
Yeah, well, so, there's got to be some coordination here between these, because this is housing strategies, is the, is the title of the table right there, right?
Yeah, was the other thing housing strategies?
And then if I scroll up, housing production strategies.
Yeah, so I think the note on the table is to have the same number and order of strategies as in text.
And then, then the question is, if I've got all this text, which eventually is nicely formatted and goes into details-
Yes.
What's the purpose of having the action plan matrix? Where you're just repeating the same thing?
I think the time-
Time to complete category and stuff?
Yeah, yeah.
And the possible parties, it's, it's your table, Ray, you're supposed to love-
Yeah, I'm surprised, Ray, you just tabled it.
Well, I just, it just strikes me as a, a little redundant, but okay.
It, it, it pulls it up too, it's, it's all good.
Housing, production, strategies.
Yeah.
And if these are housing production strategies, huh, then why is this an action plan matrix? I, I don't know.
I don't either.
All right.
Brian, maybe, uh, you have some insight on this, but, um-
Oh, oh, sorry, go ahead.
No, sorry, was it on this hand, I didn't-
That is before, actually, before we move on, but go back to page 30, to strategy six.
Yeah, I, I have a page 30 comment.
Yeah, that's, that's, I bet it's the same, go ahead, Brian.
Well, the, the 40R thing.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, that needs to be fixed, or, because it says we're, we're going to look into it. And it, it's already been determined, it's not viable.
And I, and I called Sue and talked to her about that a month ago, and she said she would get back to them and have them take it out. Uh, because we don't want anyone to think that we can breathe life into that, that's-
No, no, this, this thing is dead.
It's dead, and we don't want to reopen that can of worms.
Yep, I had the same comment to take it out, yep.
Yeah.
And off the chart, yeah, but that-
Oh, right.
Obvious.
Uh, good, good, I, I didn't catch that, yeah.
Well, maybe it came off the chart, maybe that's why-
Nah, I think, I, I just saw it a minute ago, here, go back up.
Oh, yeah, there it is.
Oh, yeah, there it is, yeah, it's there, yeah.
Where, where?
It's at the top of the next page.
33, go to top page 33, Ray.
Next one, down.
Sorry, the other way, yeah, there it is right there.
See, the 40R-
Including the option of creating 40R districts.
Yeah.
I agree.
Okay. So, the, Brian, I don't know if this is something that, um, you know, because you've done a bunch of these now and you're familiar with MVPC, but I just ask, the dimensional requirements for each zone? Um, you know, they're talked about on page 23. So, there's no suggestion that those be revisited? Is that like heresy, or, um, like, not part of the consideration for a housing production plan?
Yeah, good, good question. I mean, I, I think they're trying to work within, you know, what's, yeah, wh- what is within the town zoning? It is a good idea, though, but boy, you talk about a can of worms.
Yeah, no, that's why I say it could be considered heresy, but you know, I mean, that this does drive a lot of the, uh-
Yeah.
Build-out potential of the town, right? When you get two-acre lots and 200 feet of frontage.
Yeah, I mean, it, it'd be easy to say, well, why don't we just, why don't we consider changing, you know, zone A to, you know-
Right.
Zone, everything with zone B, or, or whatever.
Well, if, you, you go ahead and mention that at a town meeting, but don't name the address.
Can I say it's your idea, Ray?
Yeah, 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 it's all mine, that's right. I've had a good life.
Yeah, uh-
Yeah, no.
Yeah, you know, the reason I bring it up is when these things are talked about, you know, on the higher level, you know, there's ma-, there's a lot of discussion going on about housing now, right? They talk about this, they talk about, oh, you know, you've got all these communities with these large lots and-
Obstomy, they-
A, a new thing I, I heard, that they wanted, uh, you, you to create a starter home district or something or whatever.
Well, that's mentioned in here.
Yeah, I, again, I, I feel like all these districts, wouldn't it just be better to straight-up build some starter homes on what we have? You know, I don't get it.
Yeah, there you are, there you are, cutting through the bullshit again.
Um, I, I'm going to just throw something out here. When I was in Michigan, I attended a, uh, ho- housing association meeting. And the, it, the topic was building more affordable housing. But they used a word that we don't use yet, and that is attainable housing. That people have a stigma about affordable housing. You know, the guy who thinks that we're going to become Lawrence. But attainable housing speaks to the people who are trying to live on a teacher's salary, or a nurse's salary, or a fireman's salary.
Or almost any salary.
Yeah, most any category. Anyway, I, I've brought it up to an Affordable Housing Trust meeting, that it's just a, a word that maybe ought to come into play more when we're talking about what we'd like to build, attainable housing.
I like that, that's, that's good, yeah.
Yep.
Yes, that is good.
Well, alrighty. Anything else?
Uh, just that, Ray, I, I guess as chair, could, could you maybe have Jen send this off to, uh, God, what the hell's her name?
I, I'll, uh, I'll-
MVPC. Kay, Kaylee, or Kylie, or Kayla, Kayla, I think.
Yeah, her name's in here in the report.
Yeah.
I gotta, I gotta get up from my desk without rolling a chair over a golden retriever.
There you go.
Don't do that.
Oh, yeah, Kayla Rennie.
Kayla Rennie, yes. This could be returned to her with the edits.
Does it go to the select board as well, or no?
Sure.
Well, if I, if I send it to Jen-
Yeah, she'll figure it out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They'll distribute it.
Yeah, thank you.
Good idea.
Uh, question, Ray, is administrative details where we're going to talk about, uh, the, the town planner position? I mean, if we-
Sure.
Got a new town planner in the very near future, we've got somebody to whom we could delegate-
Tim and I, Tim and I are authorized to say that things are moving forward and that Angus is cautiously optimistic. Other than that, we're not supposed to go into any details.
Yeah, right.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
Have the, let me ask, have the interviews been completed?
Yes.
Good, okay.
They went well, or it wa-, it went well.
It went well.
Right, Deb?
It went well.
Yes.
The process, that is, yes.
The process went well.
The process is, is ongoing.
Excellent.
Uh, 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 expediently moving forward.
Great.
Okay, and, and, and we should not hesitate to just forge ahead with other things, because you never know.
You, you, and, and you really don't ever know, right?
No, we should definitely let Jen do this. I'm beginning to think that, uh, you know, Jen is going to be the fairy godmother of our town, because-
God knows, we could all use a good fairy godmother.
She's able to do so many things for so many groups that need that assistance, it's wonderful.
I could have sworn I had the, uh, latest and greatest here.
And it's sent separately, but they might be in, they might be at the end of the packet, is that what you're looking for?
Yeah, and they were updated, there was an updated, oh, thing.
Yeah, there was a new packet sent yesterday.
It's just the ones set, right?
Yes.
Just August 6th?
Okay, I think I got it. Yeah, can you guys, can you guys see this?
Yep.
Yes, yes.
So, they caught you calling the meeting to order at 6:59, Ray? Wow.
That doesn't sound like me, I'm more of a 7:01 kind of guy.
Somebody who's keeping track.
Yeah.
Let's be Adam.
So, that leads me to ask, we have not signed off on the River Road project, because we're waiting for a bond.
Yes, correct.
So, we're still waiting?
We're still waiting, I checked in with Jen today about that. She's checked the email, um, nothing recently. Last week, she had reached out to Mr. Fusco, right? Fusco, yeah, and, uh, he did not respond at this point.
It's strange.
There were, I also saw the A and R lot on Stewart Street was sitting on a table, then, and it looked like it was waiting for our signatures, but-
Good question, Deb, those were the original plans, that it didn't have the, uh, table that we asked to be put on the updated plan. But, yeah, good question, so, yeah, yeah. I gave Ray some misinformation about that, I thought we had them, and then Jen said, no, no, they haven't submitted the updated plan.
So, I'm slowly scrolling here, assuming that you guys will chime in if there's something that needs to be addressed. So, here, now, I'm, I'm, I move that we approve these minutes?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah.
Nope.
All those in favor, Ray, Kogai?
Aye.
I'm Cronin.
Brian Murphy, aye.
Yeah, bye.
Yeah, all right. Thank you. That's the minutes correspondence, um, yeah, we got a little correspondence in that packet. Groveland.
Six lot subdivision.
Yeah. Newburyport, they're having a joint public hearing between the planning board and city council.
Yeah, the Kmart one, that's going to be good.
What, what is the plan for the Kmart?
Housing?
Housing.
No kidding?
Well, that's what I've heard Bandit about.
Rezone.
Facilitating the develop, facilitating redevelopment of the former and presently vacant Kmart site off Low Street.
Oh, yeah.
Affordable and multifamily housing, subject to certain parameters. That's interesting to me.
Yeah. Makes sense to me, it's near the heart.
I've heard, I've heard of them doing these, this to, with, uh, old malls and stuff, too.
That's basically what that is, there's parking, there's a grocery store, there's a drugstore, I think-
Yeah, be great, yep.
Not that far from the schools. Yeah.
Administrative, uh, details, uh, we mentioned that, uh, things are moving ahead with the planner?
Yes.
Cautiously optimistic, right?
Don't know of any other administrative details, Tim?
Nope.
All right. Uh, placement values for future planning board agendas.
Well, it sounds like Fusco and Stewart Street are both kind of hanging fire until we hear from them.
Yeah.
Anything else?
I would say that it's reasonable for us to just leave it like that for now, and, uh, you know, if, uh, if, uh, the future shines upon us and we have a new planner, we can readdress these things.
Are there things we need to get ready for town meeting? It turns out there are no bylaws then, right? These are all appended.
Yeah, I think we agreed tonight, we're not going to rush the battery storage stuff, there's no way that works. And we agreed tonight that the changes, potential changes to the ADU stuff, that that's going to wait, so-
But your idea, though, was intriguing, Ray, about possibly giving a brief report. It would be more like what we're working on, so that it's not a complete surprise at spring town meeting.
Yeah, I also think, I, I don't know what your perception is, my perception over the years is that, uh, the planning board has been misunderstood. So, uh, having, having just a little brief report like that lets people know that we're, we're working on stuff here, folks, we're not-
Yeah, I think that's true.
I've, I've been so surprised when it's come back to me that people think we're in the pocket of developers and stuff.
Right, yeah.
Awful lot, well, tracks with the, you know, what you hear about utter mistrust in government, right?
Yeah, which is just a damn shame.
It is.
Certainly is a new thing, just in these last few years in this town, to hear those kinds of things.
Well, we should, we should consider not asking for a salary increase this, uh, this year.
I think we're all set for now, yeah.
Yeah.
Ah, holding the line at zero.
So, we might, I, my understanding, the, uh, select board is interviewing the, uh, associate candidates-
Yes.
Tomorrow night.
Oh, is that right?
Yes.
I saw them on the agenda.
Excellent.
So, we may have a new associate to join us.
Yeah, I thought there, I, I think there are places to use all those people's talents.
Yeah.
One, and three elsewhere.
Yeah, well, you know, in general, in this town, we've been very lucky that people have stepped up. Of course, I mean, obviously, there's the glamour and the fame. All right, well, then, uh, uh-
I just said one thing, Ray, just one thing.
Yes.
On the, uh, MBTA Communities Act, the work that the select board was doing, is that, is that, Brian, did, did you, did you look at the agenda? I was just wondering, like, they were going to look at the impact study again, and the consultant and things like that, is, is, to my knowledge, is there anything going on there?
Um, nothing jumped out on the agenda for me about, at, about that. I, I may have missed something, it was a busy agenda.
It was a big agenda.
Uh, but I, I didn't see anything about MBTA.
Yeah, because I guess if we are going to do a report out at the town meeting, that would be like, you know, the hot-button item, like, you know, are we picking that up? And that's really more with the select-
Yeah, I mean, I think we should talk about it the next meeting or two.
Yeah.
Um-
We, we have meetings before town meetings still, right?
Yeah, three, like, three, three of them, I think.
Okay, we should, we should work on our report, for sure.
Uh, but, yes, we should, yeah.
That was it.
Very good. Well, uh-
Okay.
I moved that we adjourn the meeting.